Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 2022 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I am the President of the United States of America and consider a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Members, have you read the minutes from the November meeting? Do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
No.
Hugo.
He was asking me a question before we started.
Well, then punch him.
No.
No. I don't have any questions, like I said.
No violence.
Oh, no. Anyway, back.
I know it's hard for you.
Members, have you read the? Have you read the?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept the?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the Ranieri property?
Good evening.
Good evening. Please give us a brief rundown of why you're here.
Well, we've been here before. We met with the consultants a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, in a Zoom meeting. And based on their suggestions for revisions, we revised the plans. And we're here, hopefully, to get this. We have a public hearing. And if there's no adverse comments, we hope that we can put this through to administrative review.
Thank you, Jack. Members, any questions? Oh, you should say who you are.
My name is John Correll. I'm the engineer for the project.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board. Following on what Mr. Correll said, he did make a submittal. We did meet with him. We went through most of the outstanding issues. He made a submittal following that meeting. I did not prepare a memo because the submittal was received on the 12th. But I did for the most, I did review it, look through it. And for the most part, most of the concerns have been addressed. There are some minor details, some notes, some other things that need to be cleaned, cleaned up and resolved. But I think, for the most part, we are probably 90% there. And it's on for public hearing tonight. And provided there are no substantive public comments, it would be, we would be willing to concur with Mr. Correll's request to move it to administrative, although there are a few other items dealing with some of the property and things that the attorney has mentioned that will need to be rolled into there. And then, once we get final drawings, I will need to come back to you for a bond recommendation. That's where we are.
Great, thank you, John. John, I don't think you said who you were.
No, he did.
Oh, he did?
He did.
Who's listening?
He needs no introduction.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barber. I'm the town environmental consultant. To concur with what John said, we met with John, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Ranieri. We discussed some of the more detailed aspects of the plan. We went over the environmental issues. The board will recall, we were talking about doing some wetland creation to mitigate for some filling of wetlands. We're going to be fine tuning that in the future, as well as establishing a maintenance and inspection plan. Mr. Correll has also indicated on a plan note that the soil that was contaminated will be mitigated pursuant to DEC requirements. So to echo John, I think we're just about 95% there. And I concur that if there is no public comment, the board can close the public hearing. We can go administrative.
Thank you, Liz. Liz, do you want to add anything?
I'll just be quick. My name is Liz Axelson. I'm the planning consultant to the Town of Kent Planning Board. I did do a set of comments. These are, again, these are cleanup items. I agree with the business about the hearing and having this go into administrative track. And I'll just, whatever comes after that, I'll review for my remaining comments. And the only thing, you know, Jeff Patterson had some comments on November 3, 2022, and I refer to those in my memo. But I think that's all possible to get wrapped up.
Thank you, Liz.
Get a submittal. Okay.
Members, can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this project?
Nope, that's it.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to move this project to administrative track?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Have we covered everything, gentlemen? Do you have any more questions for us?
No, do not. Thank you very much.
Bob, you?
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Exactly right.
Well, let's move on to Patterson Crossing. Is that just something you're doing, Liz? Is there anyone here who wants to speak about Patterson? Oh, we have someone. I'm sorry. Well, look who it is.
Good evening. Jamie La Judas from Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Here on behalf of Patterson Crossing, we're looking for reapproval of the project. Nothing's changed since the last approval or the extensions. Just here for procedurally looking for a reapproval.
Thank you. Liz?
So I did prepare a draft resolution for this meeting. Not going to go into a lot of detail. This is a reapproval of the project with conditions. And so basically, little bit of introduction, talking about the project, the effect of the economy, the fact that there was two 90-day extensions granted on January 4. I'm sorry. This would have expired January 4th. So we have to do this now in December. So anyway, the whereas's on the first couple pages of the resolution, go back over the project history, talk about it being subject to steep slopes and erosion, wetlands, et cetera. Has a long history. The resolution also goes back over, there have been a number of times where the project conditions had been approved, but the approval was near expiration and had to be extended, then had to be come back, then they came back and had to be reapproved, and then the two 90-day extensions and reapproved. Anyway, we've been through a few rounds, but the fact is, the project is viable. So I do recommend that the board adopt a resolution with conditions granting reapproval to the Patterson Crossing retail development. And there are conditions stated in the end of it, but a lot of the conditions have footnotes about items that have already been addressed. So the project seems to be in good shape for reapproval.
Well, when they, if and when they come back to actually do this, we'll still have to approve, give them a final approval?
Well, it-
Or will they stick to everything that they said they were going to do?
For example, if, if, if in, right now, you're doing a reapproval, which means one of the conditions at the very end talks about, hang on a second here, that they, they have a year from today to have all the conditions addressed. Some of the conditions may need updating. And so within a year of this approval, everything has to be addressed, plan signed, and they would have to start construction. That's the typical condition for site plan approval.
Unless we give them another exception.
Unless things are still not so great in the economy, and they would write us a letter before the approval expires. But in the next round, we would have to offer them two 90-day extensions of this reapproval.
So Liz, we gave them two 90-day extensions from the prior approval. We're now giving them a year approval, which is good for one year.
It alternates. It's, it's, so when their first approval expired, they had to have two 90-day extensions. When those two 90-day extensions expired, they had to have a reapproval.
Okay.
And it alternates.
And that's for a year, so they don't have to keep coming back every 90 days.
Right. The most that the board could grant, for example, in the last two 90-day approvals, that's the most the board can extend an approval. Those are two 90-day extensions of approval.
And is there something magic, Jamie? Is there something magic about the one year that you think there will be something materially different in that year? Is it, are we limited it to being only a year? How did we arrive at one year?
The code allows you, when you do site plan approval, the applicants always have, if they were brand new and we were giving them their first approval, site plan approval, they have one year from the date of approval to address all the conditions.
Okay.
That's the normal thing. It's just that this is a very large-scale development, and given the economy, this one has had to go through a number of rounds of, again, they had an approval, they were only allowed two 90-day extensions from the planning board. When those 90-day extensions were about to expire, they had to come back for reapproval because the board is limited. It can only give two 90-day extensions.
Thank you.
Okay? I hope that helps. Does it? No? Do you have questions?
Questions, anyone? So we need to do a resolution for the reapproval of this project.
Yep. And I prepared the resolution, and I believe that I had emailed it to everybody, but...
I don't, I don't think I saw anything in here.
Think we got it, like, today or something?
No, no, this was a couple of weeks ago.
Do you want to, do you want to phrase it properly for us?
Okay.
I'll go right to the paragraph.
I don't think I have it. You don't have it, right? No, I don't have it either.
Members, I'm going to ask-
All right, I'm going to give you a little bit of verbiage. So I'm on page nine of the resolution, and it starts, "Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby affirms a September 9, 2010 findings." And then it goes through a litany of reapprovals and extensions. And the last resolved, let's see, we reaffirm all the, okay, here we go. "Be it further resolved, the planning board," uh, hang on a second, I need to find the most current one. Sorry, it is really a jungle. Okay, hang on. "Pursuant to 77-60 and 77-61 of the Town Code, the site plan approval shall," wait a minute, I have to go back. It's the next one. Hang on a second. No, I was right. Okay. Okay. Yep, yep, it's a little convoluted, hang in there. "Pursuant to 77-60 and Section 77-61 of the Town Code, the site plan approval shall be void if construction is not started within one year of the date of planning board approval and completion within two years of the date of such approval. Prior to its expiration, the site plan approval may be renewed by written request of the applicant for up to two additional 90-day periods. And accordingly, the reapprovals with conditions granted on May 13, 2021 herein would have expired unless construction had started no later than July 8, 2022, and had been completed no later than July 8, 2023. Be it further resolved, the amended site plan, steep slope, erosion control permit, and freshwater wetland permit, reapprovals granted herein are subject to the following procedural conditions. Prior to the expiration date of the first 90-day extension, the applicant and/or their representative shall return to the planning board at a regular scheduled meeting, and the planning board in its discretion retains the right to rescind the second 90-day extension." This is the new rule that we had. "Be it further resolved, the amended site plan, steep slope and erosion control permit and freshwater wetland permit, reapprovals granted herein are expressly conditioned on completion of and compliance with the following." And then it goes through a list of the maps. "The project shall be developed in accordance with the plans and specifications that have been reviewed by the planning board specifically." And it gives a list of those maps, all sheets dated 2016. "Prior to obtaining the chairman's signature on the project plans, the following additional approvals and permits shall be obtained, and any conditions following or otherwise stated in this resolution shall be complied with." And then it goes through a number of conditions that remain in their current status. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, Liz.
Granting approval with conditions, reapproval with conditions.
Members, can I get a motion to accept with approval?
Can I just say one thing before, before we do that? It would be helpful in the future, Liz. I understand you sent that to us three weeks ago, but we get an awful lot of email. And so either to have some kind of summary in front of us, or to have the actual document in front of us for this meeting, it, that's an awful long document for us to be motion in-
I understand.
-approving on without having our eyes upon it.
Yep, I understand.
So for the future, at least, I'd like that.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, please.
A second.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
You?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is there anything else?
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Galazaca Mayet? Just say one thing to the board. Yes, please.
I'd just like to thank the chairman and the members of the board for your consideration. I appreciate it very much, and I wish everybody happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Is there anyone here from Galazaca Mayet?
What? I found what? I found something I was looking for. What is this? What's this? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Oscar Ovayi. I'm representing the architect Daniel Mayet, the owner. This is basically an existing one-family house, which has one, a two-car garage addition, finished at the beginning of this year. And there is a proposed driveway. Basically, we are looking to increase the impervious surfaces in 1,341 square feet. This is going to have a disturbance of 4,169 square feet in areas of slopes greater than 50%, slightly slow, more than 50%. We are proposing a coltech system of 28 linear feet to mitigate the runoff. And the steep slopes areas, basically, we identified four areas here that you can see on this plan. Portion A is 12.30%, Area B is 18%, C 15%, and D 15%. So the average slope is 15.07%. Basically, that's it.
Thank you.
This is our first opportunity to review this application with the board. As was said earlier, this is a single-family residence on Soul Drive. The application is to construct a 480-square-foot garage to that existing single-family residence. And as indicated, the proposed disturbance is about 4,100 square feet, and there are some steep slopes out there. John and I are going to schedule an appointment to go out and look at the property. Based upon the materials that have been provided, there is a wetlands adjacent to the site, which has a drainage easement that is collecting water from the road area and bringing it to the wetland system behind the property. Have a quick look at that and see if that's of impact and if there are wetland permits that's needed. There is confirmation from the building inspector required that any zoning variances are required, but it appears that that is not the case at present based upon the review of the maps. We do need to have a short-form EAF provided for our review. And then there's just some odds and ends, basically, with respect to, we'd like to see a full plan sheet for review, copy of the property survey indeed, showing the setback zoning lines on the plans, indicate any areas of rock outcropping, if there's going to be any blasting or rock chipping associated with the proposed action, erosion control updates and construction entrance, overflow structures for the stormwater. So just some odds and ends, basically, that we would see preliminarily on any plan. So we'd like to work with the applicant and have them come back in January with comments and revised materials so we can move this, move this forward. John?
And you supplied him with this list?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me? You supplied him with the list.
Like what he needs? You gave him what he needed to, to meet this, right?
The report. Yeah. All right, good.
Good evening. I'm going to echo what Bruce said. We did get a full, we did get a submittal. There are a number of items that are kind of outstanding. There's a couple of things here. This, this project was the subject of an enforcement action brought by the building inspector because he started work and had the site cleared and did a lot of work without, perhaps, entertaining the necessary permits. The building inspector has advised me that he has issued a building permit, but it is limited to five, five foot outside the building. Can't do any site work until he gets a, perhaps, a permit. The site, I believe, is served by an existing subsurface disposal system and an existing well. The existing well, I don't see on the plan, but it needs to be shown. I don't know whether there's any improvements or other items necessary. My understanding is this house has been vacant for quite a while, and so I don't know what the shape of those facilities are. The disturbance, as the gentleman said, is around 4,100 square feet. But if you read the disturbance definition in our code, my, the disturbance is far greater. They had an existing driveway that they're no longer using. They relocated the driveway and put the garage on the opposite side of the house. So as a consequence, there's a lot of information that needs to be generated. They've created a new driveway, as this gentleman went through. This is a steep lot. I, we need to see a driveway profile to see how that driveway complies with the town standard and what, if any, other improvements need to be made. So, and I do have a rather detailed memo, and it's all set forth in there, what, what is required to be resubmitted. There are some, there are some issues here because it, again, it's a result of an enforcement action, and there's not a lot of detail in this first pass-through. So what I would recommend is Bruce and I did have a site visit scheduled. We were unable to make it, so we need to make a site visit and coordinate that. And there's no action for the board to take tonight, but we would respectfully request that the project sponsor and his engineer or, and/or architect address our concerns, and we look forward to a submission in the future.
I have one question. Sorry. Is there, we don't have a plan show on the existing conditions before you did anything, do we?
No.
Is there any way of obtaining something like that? Because-
No. Basically, we have plans of what was done already.
No, I'm saying, do we have, can we get a plan of what, where the driveway was compared to where you put it?
Yeah, absolutely.
What was on the site? You have the survey that, that was done before.
We can-
Can we attach it so we can see what you've done?
We need a survey.
Sorry?
We need a survey.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He should have the survey.
Right.
He should have one because whoever closed on the house should have the survey.
If you look at the county website on the areas, you can kind of see where things were. It's-
Bruce and John, would you let me know when you're going on the site visit so I can join you, please?
Absolutely, sure.
Members, any other questions? Do you have any other questions for us?
No, I think it's the, what we need to address.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Is there anyone for George and Sally Marriott property?
This isn't the one, too, right?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
Evening, members of the board. Dan Collins Hudson, engineer, the engineers for the project. Just to give a background, the existing site currently consists of a one-story ranch-style residence towards the front of the lot, towards the street, with lawn and landscaping, and then driveway access, fumbling road. The rest of the half, the rest of the property slopes down moderately towards the rear of the property, rear of the lot line. And all the rest of it's basically wooded area to the rear property line. No existing, no wetlands exist on this site. There are wetlands that exist off the site through the rear, which is, I guess, is in the rear setback to the house where 502.3 feet, 502.3 feet from the garage to the property line. So it's a good distance away for you get to any wetlands or wetlands buffers. We do have a septic behind the rear property. We do have a well located. I know there was some additional information. We did go through the memo from the engineer and from the environmental consultant. So where there was some stuff that we didn't include in our submission that we probably should have, we do have all that information, so we, so we will provide that with our next, with our next submission to clarify a lot of these things. So what I'm proposing to do is construct a new addition along the back and side of the house here, with a front patio, also modifying the front driveway to buy more street streets, look down to a new detached garage. We're going to expand the pavement in the front of the garage to be more of an able to turn around, so that we can park cars here, moving a little bit better on site. Then additionally, we're going to be putting a new walkway connected in the back of the residence to the detached garage. Again, the detached garage is located out there along the septic field, the existing septic field meets the required separation. In regard to the stormwater, we are capturing all the impervious area, including the existing house, so all the roof area, all the proposed driveway area, and the proposed detached garage. So we have it brought to a subsurface drywall system located in the rear of the property. Positioning again, as you normally do, we put erosion control measures throughout the work area to limit any sediment from exiting the area that we're going to work. With the proposed additions, the three-bedroom house, the existing three-bedroom house is going to maintain that count, so that there shouldn't be any modifications necessary for the existing septic field. So that should remain unchanged, as we will be keeping three bedrooms in this house, as the field was originally designed for. With that being said, we have, again, received the comment memos from both the towns' consultants. We do have, obviously, there is a few comments in there that we do need to address, but we have all the information, and we should be able to nail it down the next time we send everything in.
Great, thank you. Members, any questions?
This is our first opportunity to review this application as well. It is to construct a one-story addition, a three-car garage, as mentioned, a driveway and a patio. The total area, proposed footprint, is 5,355 square feet. There will be constructed stormwater management structures, and this is an existing single-family residence. Total land disturbance is 18,339 square feet, a little less than half an acre. The subject property total is 3.93 acres. It's in our 80 zoning district. Steep slope and erosion control permit is required. We will see if a wetland permit is determined, because John and I, again, as was the last application, will be heading out to do a site visit shortly on this to determine what we've got. We do need to see a bulk zoning table, just to take a look at zoning compliance on the plans. And there's just some odds and ends on this again as well, providing a full plan sheet, architectural floor plans and elevations, so we can see what the proposed changes are in the additions and confirm what's been stated, that the bedroom count is going to remain the same.
Copy of the deed, zoning bulk table and zoning setback lines shown on the plans, any areas of rock outcropping or potential blasting, grading plan, some stormwater structure details. But just again, some odds and ends, first opportunity to review it. We look forward to getting the comments back from the applicant so we continue to have a look.
Thank you, Bruce.
I'm not going to repeat a lot of what's going on. I did have an opportunity to review it. There is a lot of information there, but there's a lot that remains to be provided. I don't think there's any real showstoppers. It's just basically dotting i's and crossing t's. Couple of the issues again, they're redoing the driveway. We need to do driveway profile so that we understand whether it meets or complies with our standards. There's some deficiencies in the SEAF that need to be corrected. It's another case where I couldn't find the existing well, but other than that, I think it's, it is going to need an erosion control permit, but because it is in the east of Hudson Watershead, it's also going to need coverage under the speedies permit. So we're going to need all those details. That's why it seems like there's a lot of information, but the town and the speedies requirements overlap. So again, as Bruce said, we need a site visit and we need the responses from the engineer and then we should be off to the races.
Thank you, John. And there's nothing we need to do tonight? Members, do you, sorry. Members, do we have any questions?
No.
Do you have any more questions for us?
That's it. All good.
Thank you. We'll see you in a month.
All right, thank you so much.
Anyone here for Freel and Pure?
My name is Margaret McNannes. I'm the engineer for the project from Beatty and Watson. I believe this is our second time before the board. We did respond to comments, made some modifications to the plan. The house is setback from the wetland buffer. There's a buffer from the buffer, so to speak, and we propose to put a two-foot wall at the edge of the wetland buffer near the structure to delineate that buffer. We made some modifications to the driveway and we do need a waiver for a fifteen percent grade for a portion of the driveway that is nearing the garage. And other than that, I think there were one other waiver that we will need, which is we're requesting to not have the...
Tree waiver.
Do we need a tree waiver because we're not doing anything in the wetland or the buffer?
Typically, you would need to ask for just not mark that.
Okay. And we also do not want to provide a new survey at this time. There's an existing subdivision map and all the improvements are set well far away from the property line. I understand that at the end of the project, the applicant will need to provide an as-built survey and at that time, a survey would, of the new improvements would be provided to the town. We received the comment letters from the consultants today and there seem to be some minor modifications that we need to make, but nothing outrageous. Bruce, you did mention whether or not we would need a blasting permit. We will not. The only place there's cut is at the beginning of the driveway and other than that, we're pretty close to grade. Even with the house, the garage is within two feet and then we drop down for the basement and that's within two feet of the grades. So we should be fine and not need a blasting permit. And we can provide documentation for that.
John?
No, that's, that helps more of the board members. Good evening. Again, this is, this is their second visit here. We had provided their original memo, they had addressed it. Couple of things, they did ask for that boundary survey waiver last time. I checked the minutes, suggested you didn't make a final determination at that time. Our recommendation is that you grant that waiver. This is a pretty well-defined site, the subdivision plan is, is pretty good shape, so I don't see the need for a current survey at the present time. There's a couple minor technical things. They, this apparently had Putnam County Health Department approval. The response letter indicates that they need a revised approval is necessary because they're making some plan changes due to the wetlands and/or the house and the driveway locations. So we would need written evidence that amended approvals have been obtained. A lot of our comments have been resolved. A lot of our comments, we still need to finish some items. And then a couple new issues in relocating the house. They pulled the house away from the wetlands in response to our comments to give themselves a little more buffer so that the wetlands aren't intruded to during construction. But as a consequence, they have a small section of driveway grade that now approaches fifteen percent. The rest of the driveway is well within standard, but they have a short section that approaches fifteen percent as it approaches the house. So it requires a waiver. Typically, you would submit that to the highway superintendent in the fire district. I do not have a problem and concept with it. It is a short run and it's well setback. So, but you probably should refer this to the highway superintendent and the fire district for their comments, should there be any. And then if you remember, the last time we were here, they updated their survey and there was a, there's a picture there. There's a telephone pole at the front of the driveway and the original note was there, slide the driveway right into where the telephone pole was. The utility company was actually replacing the poles at the time. So they've now kind of shifted it downhill a little bit, but the more I look at the photograph and the more I recall when Bruce and I were out there, we're wondering if it might not be better off and create a less awkward motion to put the driveway on the north side of the pole rather than the south side of the pole. We defer to them. It matters not to me. It's just in looking at their topo, looking at the grading, it just seems they get to pick up a little bit extra elevation, maybe a little less cut, and they can square it up a little better if they move it north of the pole. But either way, it works for me. So, and then tree waiver, this site was the subject of a rather intensive timber harvest a couple of years ago. So most of the trees that are worth anything have been removed. And if you look at where they are making their improvements for the septic system, the driveway in the house, the driveway is basically along the road, the route of a former trail, logging trail, and the house itself is sit on a rock promontory that was previously cleared. So there aren't a lot of trees that are going to be disturbed by this action. So I have no problem granting the tree waiver. And you will just need, after you get some feedback from the highway superintendent and the fire district to address the waiver for the fifteen percent grade.
Do we need to make a motion to refer this to?
No, you can just ask Vera to refer it, Mr. Chairman.
Vera, please.
And then the final analysis is, this is, as always, you can wait the public hearing. We defer to you, but in the event you choose to hold a public hearing, we believe the current application is in sufficient form for you to schedule a public hearing at your next meeting.
Okay. But basically, all you're saying is we need to do a tree waiver.
I'll take care of it.
This is our second opportunity to review this. The applicant has responded to the vast majority of the questions that I had. One thing that did come up is when I was out at the site, I've been out there several times, there is nothing unusual, there's an awful lot of rock out there. And so the comment for blasting was basically to indicate that, you know, how are you going to ensure that blasting won't occur on the property? We haven't seen the architectural plans. I wasn't aware there wasn't a basement or not, what was happening out there with respect to the elevations that Margaret just alluded to. So if she can provide that documentation to the board for the next meeting, that'd be very, very helpful to ensure that it will not be an opportunity where blasting will occur on the site. Other than that, there's just some basic odds and ends here. I am very much pleased that there'll be a stone wall marking the edge of the wetland buffer. That might be a deterrent to encroachment in the future. Usually, we don't see that type of activity, but I imagine there's going to be a few rocks that they can use to make the stone wall out of, which is a great thing. Other than that, just some odds and ends, providing some architectural plans, documentation regarding the blasting, as I mentioned, too. The wall, I think in one spot, I might have read it wrong, Margaret indicated it's going to be about six feet on that downhill side. Is that correct?
So there is one section of the wall that will go from like two to six feet. So that wall will have to get a building permit from, during the building permit process.
Gotcha, gotcha. Just wanted to make sure you're aware. Okay.
Well, I know what you guys have said.
Yeah. And so, other than that, just some odds and ends. The applicant, as John indicated, a couple of years back, or the owner, did some logging on the property. I agree that most of the trees that were substantial have been taken care of in that logging operation. There is no real substantial tree removal going on associated with the specific action before the board, so I recommend that the tree waiver be granted by the board as well and also scheduling the public hearing for January.
Members, do you have any questions? Can I get a motion to grant the tree waiver?
Motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is, that's all we've got to do, bro.
Tree waiver, boundary survey, updated property survey?
Yeah, yes.
Waiter as well?
Public hearing, the...
Boundary survey. What, boundary survey, you said? You wanted the waiver, correct?
Yes.
And a motion for this survey, too.
For boundary survey, I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, then schedule the public hearing in January twelve.
Was there something else?
Fifteen percent, which you need input from the town, suspended in the fire district before you can add that.
And the other one is the...
Public hearing.
Right. Can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing? And I'm meeting in January.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other questions, Bruce?
I do not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here for the INE property?
I, okay, that's fine. And now this one. No, that's the wrong one. Where the hell did this one come from?
Anybody?
Nobody.
Don't hide.
No, I think this is, Chairman, I think this is just an action by your board to authorize Vera to return their funds.
Yeah, that's right. Yep. I think it says it right there.
Can I get a motion to return application fee and escrow to the INEs?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else we need to add, Liz?
In fact, yes.
Oh, come on, Liz.
Really? Well, ordinarily, when we have a resolution prepared, you've all had an opportunity to see it, unfortunately. That didn't work this time. And so you would adopt it as prepared and that wouldn't be a big deal. But I feel like I want to put some things into the record and have you redo it because it is kind of an important project.
Please do.
So I'm going to do it. Okay. Now therefore, be it resolved, the planning board hereby affirms its September ninth, two thousand and ten findings, statement for the Patterson Crossing retail development. Be it further resolved, the project has not materially changed from the one approved January twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, reapproved November two thousand and seventeen and January ninth, two thousand and twenty, extended November twelfth, twenty twenty, and reapproved on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and extended on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two from the July eighth, twenty twenty-two expiration date. The board waives the public hearing, I'm paraphrasing here, for the reapproval of the amended site plan, amended steep slope and erosion control permit, amended freshwater wetland permit applications. Be it further resolved, planning board hereby reaffirms the assertions of the November ninth, two thousand and seventeen reapproval that the application meets the requirements of chapter thirty-nine A freshwater wetlands, sixty-six deep slope protection and chapter seventy-seven zoning. Be it further resolved, planning board hereby grants approval with conditions of the amended site plan approval for the Patterson Crossing retail development as described herein and pursuant to the code of the town of Kent, chapter seventy-seven. Be it further resolved pursuant to sixty-six six of the town code, the planning board waives the maximum slope requirements of chapter sixty-six to allow maximum slopes of fifty percent as may be approved by the planning board's professional engineer and grants reapproval with conditions of the steep slope and erosion control permit for the project as described herein. Be it further resolved pursuant to thirty-nine A seven D one of the code, planning board grants reapproval with conditions of the freshwater wetland permit for the regulated activities described herein. Be it further resolved, planning board had granted the above-described amended site plan, steep slope erosion control permit and freshwater wetland permit extensions of reapprovals with conditions effective and running forward from July eighth, twenty twenty-one so that any future expiration would occur one year from July eighth, twenty twenty-one, noting the previous two ninety-day extensions granted on November twelfth, twenty twenty. Be it further resolved pursuant to zoning sections in the town code, site plan approval shall be void if construction's not started within one year of date of planning board approval and completed within two years of the date of the approval. And is allowed two ninety-day extensions, which would have expired unless construction had started no later than July eighth, twenty twenty-two and been completed no later than July eighth, twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved, the amended site plan, steep slope and erosion control permit, freshwater wetland permit, reapprovals granted herein are subject to the following procedural conditions and then describes that they can come back for two ninety-day extensions with a check-in in the middle. And be it further resolved, the amended site plan, steep slope and erosion control permit and freshwater wetland permit reapprovals granted herein are expressly conditioned on completion of and compliance with the following and they are conditions number one through eighteen. And then if you wouldn't mind doing the motion and second again, please?
Can I get a motion to accept this extended resolution?
Motion.
And a second, please?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I see you did more work reading this than they did on Patterson Crossing.
What? Say it again.
I was reading there, Liz.
Had to read through it.
Absolutely.
Sorry. It wasn't, it wasn't as much fun as you might think.
So are we done with INE property?
Yes.
Yes.
So let's...
Oh, wait, no, we never made the motion to give them back their money.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Vera, we did, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's working below the line?
Gosh, I'm below the line.
You're, you're, this is a trio.
I'm not sure, Vera, are we having Old Seventeen LLC or whoever's next on the application review meetings?
Yeah, they're on to the...
Okay. So, so Old Seventeen LLC, there's a new owner, so we're going to aid the former applicants and the current applicants in trying to help them make that transition so they can prevent any expiration of their approval. So they'll come to the consultants' review meeting next Tuesday. Flintlock Storage, still working on comments? Go ahead.
Flintlock Storage, they are, they are working on a response. They, they did listen to you, so they have, they're advancing the Board of Health. It looks like they're going to get something in writing from the Board of Health currently. I have been in touch with Jeff Battistoni. Jeff is formulating a formal opinion as to what it will take as a condition to, in absent an official easement, there are some language that he's crafting that will be incorporated into a resolution. I expect to have that once they make their submittal. He'll get that to us. And other than that, we're just waiting...
On DOT.
On DOT.
DOT.
And we haven't heard anything official, well, I take that back. I did speak with DOT. DOT's position is as follows: so long as the pipe is disconnected and terminated from their culvert, crossing Route fifty-two, and that there is a section, defined section of open ditch between the end of their culvert and a pipe on-site, they are good. And that the pipe can do what it needs to do and they don't want any easements.
And that the pipe can do what it needs to do and they don't want any easements. I don't, I have emails to that effect, but we haven't seen anything in writing and I believe our friends at Insight are trying to get DOT to convince in writing. We do have emails that recite that set of facts and they actually give us a dimension, I think 19 foot off the white line is where they want it terminated. So that should bring it up to date. I'll stay with the next one.
Okay. Just on Flintlock, they had made some progress on the planning and zoning comments. They still had some more to do. We need another submittal, but they were making progress.
Annunziata, I was in contact with Mr. Carell as late as this afternoon. It kind of slipped his mind, this is on administrative track, but we do need, we do need a resubmittal that addresses the outstanding items. So he promises me I will see that on Monday. White Vernon, I think Vera is waiting to get the bond back from the town board. I O Jackery. Oh, they need to submit it, pardon me. And I need to review a submittal that Mr. Carell made, it's on my desk. He made multiple submittals and I was kind of confused. I think I finally sorted out which is the most current and which I need to review. So that one's on me. Holly, I think that one's... Yep? Nope?
Basically, the last thing with Holly, they were all done and we had made sure they had the map that needed to go with the document to be fully executed stipulation. So I still don't know if that happened or not. I guess I'll follow up with Lana.
The next one is Realbeuto. The board will recall that we had a discussion at the last meeting about how that might be best brought into compliance. There were some soils that were brought to the site and there was discussion about how we're going to determine if the soils need to be removed, could stay in place, etc. The board authorized John and I to work with the applicant to come up with a reasonable plan to inspect the site, collect soil samples, make sure they're okay. We spoke with the applicant's engineer, Mr. Carell, advised him as to what we felt would be a reasonable approach using DEC standards. He then just submitted the same approach as he had the first time to us. So we're hopeful that we can kind of work with him to get a plan formalized. We have a tentative appointment to go out to actually do the work on December 20th, so hopefully we can get that done and get this taken care of. So that's where we are.
DEC and Seven Hills, I believe the ball is in their court. They had our comments, they had to final, get some final signatures and prepare a final plat. We haven't heard from them, but it's up to them. Kent Manor, no update at the current time. Route 52 Development, I'll leave that to Liz.
So kind of an interesting turn of events. Apparently, Michael Caruso, who is the applicant's attorney, who's now with Cuddy and Fader, had reached out to Supervisor McGlasson and requested a meeting. And so there was some back and forth and then Vera was informed and I was informed. And so there's a potential to have some sort of a meeting set up about a possible new design, including a logistics center. I don't have any more details than that, but, so there has been some email back and forth. Bruce and John and I all had an issue with January 4th, so we're hoping that January 10th, which is a Tuesday, would work for Jamie and Mr. Caruso. I guess we'll find that out eventually. And then I guess it'll, we'll set that up. In his request to have a meeting with the supervisor, he said he would bring his project team and also said, you know, ask whether she would want to have members of the town board, the planning board, and the consultants attend also. Jeff Battistoni did one reply expressing some concerns. One of them was whether there's escrow, because there'll be a lot of, there'll be some consultants there. And Vera's told me that their escrow's in good shape. And then I think it's also a matter of making sure that however many planning board members or town board members attend, that it not be any kind of a quorum. Because it's a 10:00 AM meeting, so that's all I know for now.
Liz, do you know who, if anybody, will make the decision if that can be zoomed? If it goes to the 10th, that's different, but...
Is it, would you, well, I wondered whether there would be any interest in something being a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, this is a public meeting.
So it is not a public meeting?
No.
So if it could be Zoom, it would be more cost efficient for everybody and time efficient?
I agree with that, less driving time on our parts. I like the idea of a Zoom. We can ask that question.
You could ask it.
How does the board, are you...
Can you ask on the behalf of the planning board? Right? Thank you.
Yes.
That'll be up to her.
That's probably a request that should come from your chairman to Supervisor McGlasson?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
On behalf of...
But I have to agree, there was a request for a meeting several months ago for a possible project, I think over on Bowen Road, and the applicant wanted to have an in-person meeting and I had suggested that that be a Zoom meeting because then they're not, because it would have been on the town's dime. This will be on their escrow, so, but, you know, there are cost efficiencies in not driving to a meeting, so. I think that's it.
And Kent Mining, no? Nothing new?
Nope. Nothing new since...
Members, do you have any questions for anybody? Consultants, do you have anything else you want to tell us?
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Yes. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Vera, do you have anything?
And thank you for all that you do.
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything you want to tell us? Kathy, do you have anything you want to tell us?
A Zoom meeting, it still can only be a couple people, right?
Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.